Okay, we're gonna call the workshop to order. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. First, I want to thank everyone for coming in and anyone who's joined in online. We still doing that? Okay. So, I'm gonna bring up Mr. Coontz to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As everyone's aware, we've been working off and on on the property at the corner of Haber and National Road for over 12 months now. There's two applications over the last 12 months that came before City Council after going through the planning commission process. Those applications were submitted by the developer, Redwood. Both those applications failed to proceed once they got to City Council. We've also had workshops discussing the development, potential future development at that particular site. At that particular workshop, it kinda came across that single-family development was really the only option that anyone was looking at at that corner that City Council would be comfortable, you know, moving forward with. And obviously, there's a lot of things to be worked out in the future in terms of applications and what have you. But with that being said, staff has been working with Oaks Tree Development. Lance Oaks and his team are here tonight to kind of present some ideas for a single-family development at that particular corner. They wanted to get before City Council and kind of explain to you guys what their vision for that corner is and what they see as a potential real benefit to the city of Clayton moving forward. Before they submit an application, they wanted to kind of explain their story and kind of what they felt could be real positive for the community at large. So, we invited them here tonight to discuss with you guys to get your feedback as well so that, you know, they can take back what you guys talked to them about and see if that's something that they can incorporate on a possible application moving forward. So, with all that being said, I'd like to welcome Mr. Oaks up and have a discussion with you guys tonight.
Thank you very much, Jack.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Appreciate your guys' time this evening. My name is Lance Oaks with Oaks Tree Development, 8534 Yankee Street, Dayton, Ohio. And as Jack mentioned, I want to try to keep this as, you know, informal and kind of interactive as possible. So, as I go through my presentation, if you guys have any questions or stop or have anything you would like to know, let's talk about it. Because the more feedback we can get, the more helpful it is for us when we come and make a formal application to you. So, the property, as Jack mentioned, is at the corner of Haber and National Road. It was the former Redwood site that you guys had seen previously. And did understand that the concerns and the issues with the neighbors felt it was too dense. And so, when we came back, we looked at the project from just strictly a single-family residential site. And we came up, when we looked at the site, and we'll look at the site plan here shortly, there's two products we think that make the most sense for that site. The first one is on the front half of the property is a single fam, traditional single-family site, you know, your classic two-story homes. And we like that because of its location and its proximity to the high school right across the street. On the backside of the property, though, we think there's a real need in the market for what we call a lifestyle product, which is all ranch products that are typically geared towards an older population. We think that that's a real big unmet need in the Clayton market, and we think that we could really provide a good product. So, with that said, do I know how to go through the presentation?
You don't tell me the next slide, I got you.
Oh, thank you. So, the topics of discussion tonight are the overview of the site, the conceptual site plan, amenities that we anticipate for the community. I would like to have just a brief discussion on streetlights and the product type. So, next slide, please. Once again, I think we're all very familiar with the property and its current zoning. Next slide. So, this is the site plan that I was talking about. And what we have is we have both accesses coming off of Haber. So, there should be, there will not be an entrance off of National, and that was at the recommendation of staff. What we do have along National, though, is a couple water features, retention basins with fountains that should give that a nice little feel or pop as people are going down National Road. And the nice thing about, I wouldn't say the nice thing, but it actually works out in favor of this site for what we're looking to do, is there's a gas line that goes through the middle of the site, which gives kind of a nice barrier transition between the single-family and the lifestyle. What we found is that buyer, the lifestyle buyer typically doesn't want to be intermingled or, for better word, associated with the single-family aspect of the community. So, we would have, you know, a nice transition from there to that.
By lifestyle, do you mean independently-owned ranches or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, correct. And we'll look at some of those different elevations here shortly. Next slide, please. So, when we thought that the zoning on this site was the RSD zoning, we came up with the charts, typically the lot size minimum is .15 acres, 20 feet front setback, 30 feet rear yard setback. And what we're proposing for the site is 114 units. We're, I think there might be one or two that are just under that .15 acres, but as you can see, it's within 34 square feet, and we can adjust that if necessary. The frontage minimums that we're asking for is a 52-foot for the single-family and 55-foot for the lifestyle. And I, is that correct? I might be getting those mixed up. Either way, we're asking for 52- and 55-foot frontage lots and 125-foot depth minimum. Everything else would stay the same. So, that's really the big change that we're asking for, for consideration from the council is going from a 60-foot frontage to a 52- and a 55-foot frontage.
Why is the depth not important or not applicable? If you're gonna have a 30-foot rear setback, then you gotta know what the depth of the lot is, or you're gonna be building straight up like we have up in another village here in town.
The depth of the lot is important, but we're feeling comfortable.
It's not applicable up there.
I don't know if there's a depth minimum on the RSD zoning that's currently in place, so.
The reason it's not applicable is because there's not a, for the lot density maximum, there's not a lot density maximum in the zoning code.
It's not what?
There's not a maximum number in the zoning code for the density under that zoning district. The lot in question is zone, RSD zone.
Well, it matters about how big the house could be, Jack, because you got 50-foot already taken care of with the front and the rear setback.
What I'm telling you is, in the zoning code, if you look at the zoning code, you look at the setback standards or the standards in that zoning district, that is what you'll find is NA. What they're saying is what they're proposing is on the right. The stuff that's on the left, that's just what's listed in the zoning code as a requirement.
We had a house right down the street here where there was a major problem they wanted to add on, and we told them they couldn't do it.
Sure. I understand. They're just listing what the specific requirements are listed in the zoning code.
And that's a good question. And how we came about that 125 feet is the builders we typically work with, and I've got one here tonight that would most likely be the builder for this site. Their longest or deepest floor plan is, I think it's 67 feet or 75 feet. So, you take the front and the side yard setbacks, add that to their largest floor plan, and that's how we came about for the 125. So that every time if we were smaller than that, every time a customer chose that floor plan, then that customer or that builder would have to come in for a variance. And so, we don't, we just feel like that's a big hassle for the builder and for you guys as well. So, that's how we came to the 125. Next slide, please. The amenities, which is always important for this community, we would be looking for a 10-foot-wide multipurpose path up along Haber Road, the entire length. There would be entryway and water features, and I'll kind of show examples of the entryway features on the next slide. But those would all be, you know, irrigated, uplighting, and landscaped very nicely. Sidewalks throughout the entire community. And then, for the lifestyle portion of the community, we would be looking for an open space or dog park. Typically, that buyer profile, you know, they don't have kids, they do have pets, though, and they're always looking for a nice area to go and walk the pets or play in the dog park. And so, we would provide that as well. Next slide, please. So, this is, you know, we were the developers of a couple communities in the Fairborn, well, all over. We just used some examples from entryways into the communities that we've done. What I see for this community would be a blend of, there's a community called Brantwood in the city of Riverside, using their type of entry wall feature and mirroring it with another community that we have up in the Fairborn market called Waterford Landing, how it's got some decorative fencing and other landscaping around it coming out. And so, try to give a really nice pop and wow factor as people are entering up, off along Haber. And it would be on both sides of the entrance, at both entrances. And then, like I said, too, there will be some detention basins throughout the community. The interior detention basins will most likely have bubblers, but they probably will have a fountain if they're very focal. The detention basins on the exterior portions of the property will all have decorative fountains in them with uplighting. Next slide, please. For the dog park and the open space, we just wanted to show examples. We'll put benches and trashcans out there and then a dog waste station for people to utilize for their pets. Next slide, please. And so, I might pause there and just see if there's any questions in terms of the conceptual site plan or the product. And we'll get to the different elevations for the product, but any questions or thoughts on the site plan and the two product types I've discussed, the single-family and the lifestyle?
I just have one kind of specific thing, and this kind of is really directed to Seth because we had talked to, about like in the implementation, about some of the standards on, you know, streetlights, for instance, and all the, some of the benches and things like he was showing up here. So, this seems like an opportunity for us to incorporate that. So, I'm assuming we'll be in part of that, you know, part of that discussion, the development discussion.
Yes.
Did you say you're gonna have detention or retention basins?
So, retention. Well, the two up along National will definitely have water being held in them at all times. I would have to work with the engineer.
Because I think a detention basin lets the water run out, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That's what we have down here on Old Salem Road, and there's water in it after a big storm for about three hours.
Yeah, it'll just detain it and then let it leave the site at its.
But you can't have a water.
Correct.
In a detention basin, you can, in a retention basin.
For sure, up, yep, for sure, up along National Road will be retention basins with fountains.
Be retention basins.
Yes, and have fountains. The other ones interior, I'd have to work closer with my engineer and see what they have. But we would try to do that just because for this community, I do think it makes for a nicer feel. So, thank you. It's streetlights. So, one of the things that's kind of happened over the last couple years, which has been unexpected, and I don't understand why this is, but it's DPNL or Miami Valley Lighting, who the city of Clayton and other municipalities have contracts with, their prices have skyrocketed. They've gone absolutely insane, in my opinion. About four or five years ago, a light used to cost roughly about $2,000 bucks a pole to get installed. And, you know, at the time, we thought that was high, but it wasn't the end of the world. Or, you know, it wasn't crazy. Couple years ago, that cost jumped from $2,000 a light to about $12,000 or $11,000 a light. And now, that got, it gets to be very cost prohibitive with all of the costs that we as developers are feeling on increases in materials and labor and everything else. It's getting very hard to keep, you know, a project economical. And when you get something like streetlights jumping and in a plot like this, even this area might have five or six streetlights costing you well over six figures to get installed, it just becomes a burden. Now, in talking with city staff, and I, you know, wanted to bring this up, I know you guys have the Plan Clayton proposal that's extremely important, and it should be. What I was wanting to see and see if there was any movement on the council's part or thoughts could be given in consideration was having streetlights at both entrances. So, you still have that feel from the road, but as you get into the community, instead of having streetlights that are provided by Miami Valley Lighting and others, you could put individual lamppost lights on each of the lots. So, you're still giving light to the community, and it's from a safety standpoint, but you don't have the individual streetlights just because the cost is outrageous. And I know Seth has spoken with Miami Valley Lighting, he just mentioned this before we started the meeting, that, you know, that is a nice benefit that they're allowing you, it seems like, to pick your own individual lamppost lights. And there may be some cost savings there, but what's gotten really crazy is the underground utility extension. And I don't know why they're the only one who's allowed to increase the price so much because we work with Duke, Ohio Edison, Columbia, all over throughout the rest of the state of Ohio, and none of them have had, you know, they've had increases, but not to that extent. And so, I don't know how they're the only ones who are able to get away with it, so.
What about solar?
I've never looked at solar. I didn't know that was an option.
Does this have to be the same as what Norton has?
I think Seth can answer that question better.
One more quick note while Seth's coming up. Since we were recently involved in another lighting project, I think all the, I think each individual light pole is now metered also.
That's my understanding, the explanation they gave me for why the price went so high. I don't understand why that has to occur. So, you're correct, though.
Good evening, council. Just in the vein of street lighting and Plan Clayton and trying to create a brand and an image and continuity within our developments, we do have a light fixture and pole that we've selected and is going to be used in the Hunter's Path development. So, my recommendation would be that we continue that for all developments.
Which is an individual lamppost, AES lamppole?
Right, it's.
Because Hunter's Path isn't paying $12,000.
I don't know what they're paying, but we have a standard that we've given to them, and they've agreed to use, and that's what we would recommend for this as well.
That's what you're good with, too.
Is that a streetlight that Miami Valley Lighting has? Because one of the things, the reason that cost has gone up to 11, 12 is not just the cost of the pole, which, you know, may be 2,500 or 3,000, it's the underground utilities to get them in there because of that individual meter. So, they have to trench everyone and separately. It makes no sense to me why they have to do it that way, but that's what they're saying they have to do. So, I don't know if that's the case. What I would like to, because I want to make sure I'm still meeting the feel and the intent of the Plan Clayton was put the, whatever light poles that you guys have and you guys have spec'd for your community at the entryways so that people driving down Haber past the entrances still see those lights for the community. But as you go into the community, just go drop down to the individual lamppost lights, which will still all be uniform amongst the community, but not a streetlight.
And those are metered to the resident, to the individual resident?
They're just electric, run from the house. Yep. And I, I don't know if that's the same thing we're talking about here.
Seth, in love, and I don't mean to get far afield from where we are, but several, I think it's a couple of years ago, when we were talking about replacing street lamps and some other things, we started to look at solar. And I, I thought that we had asked that we look at solar as alternatives in the future. Is that possible here? Is that something that is something you can even look at? Would it save money? Would it be more? I don't know the answer to any of that, but I guess I'm reaching out to find out if you do.
I mean, I know solar poles and fixtures exist. I think it's an option. I don't know how the, you know, how that works with the electric companies in terms of capture of, you know, solar power and converting that to electricity. I don't know how that relationship would work, but I know that those fixtures do exist.
We strictly asked about the overlay district on Main Street, too, as well. That's where we proposed that idea with solar. And two, there's programs through the government, so I don't know how, who would do that or who would investigate that because there are programs right now.
Yeah, I think that's something staff can look into, certainly.
No, and it's a good idea, and we'll look. I didn't, I'll be the first to tell you, I didn't even know that existed. So, we'll look into it as well, and if it's a viable option, you know, look at seeing if we can't work that into the community as well.
So, so, North Clayton, do they have streetlights all throughout the whole plat? I don't, I haven't driven back there at night that I can remember.
Whole plat's about a foot.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only.
I don't know, I might drive over there tonight just to see. I know at the entrance, they have them, but I don't know if the whole.
To be honest with you, whatever answer I give you right now will be a guess. I just, I don't know for 100% certainty. I mean, I know that you have the entrance.
Like, rule of, have streetlights all throughout the plat?
So, where those standards come from is the Plan Clayton document. And that would be something, you know, with, if you remember with Hunter's Path, with Grand Traditions, they submitted a streetlighting plan that was included with their final development plan. What Lance is talking about today is just trying to get a kind of feel on where you guys stand on the streetlighting thing. You know, staff believes strongly in the Plan Clayton document. So, that's, you know, in our discussions with them, you know, we've been talking back and forth regarding the streetlights. I think, you know, hearing from council, it sounds like it's a good idea for us and for Lance to go back and kind of, you know, do some investigation into the solar-powered lights and see if maybe there's some sort of compromise that we can find that way. And that's something maybe we can incorporate, you know. If a plan goes forward and application goes forward, that's something that we can have discussed and have that included with that application.
Jack's absolutely correct. It's just something I was asking you guys as council members to just consider when the final ask comes, or the formal ask comes before you. You know, I understand I'm taking away something or asking to take away streetlights, but I hope I'm making up for it by giving the individual lamppost lights for each property. So, strictly something to consider, and, you know, whatever decision you guys make on the streetlights, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna live and die by it, but I'm hoping I'm out to bid on another project in Clayton right now. And I'm, I'm getting nauseous just waiting for that bid to come back from Miami Valley Lighting right now, so. But it is what it is. So, strictly on the streetlights, just something to ask that you guys put some consideration until. And thank you. Next slide. And so, we'll run through these next ones. These are just some renderings of the floor plans or elevations from the homes that we would look to build. This would be a lifestyle rendering, the next couple of them, if you want to go through them.
So, that's in the back portion, right?
Correct. And a little bit, or no, that would be, yes, in the back. And a little bit on these is they would range in size from about 1,180 square feet up until about 1,800 square feet. What we're finding these days with that buyer profile is they want a bigger lot or a bigger home, but less yard maintenance, less to take care of. And when I say a bigger home, I mean, it's still, you know, 1,200 to 1,800 square feet. So, it's not a small home, but it's not a huge home either. But they don't want a lot of yard to take care of, they just want something nice that they can come home to. It's easily managed, they don't have to spend most of their day mowing the yard, taking care of the landscaping and all of that. And then, the single-family homes are a little bit bigger, or not a little bit bigger, they're bigger. And what we would envision for the average price point, or what we anticipate right now, the average price point for all of these homes is somewhere from the mid-3s to low-4s, average. I'll be honest, I don't think they can come in less than the mid-3s today. So, I think your, your price point's gonna be averaging closer to the high-3s, low-4s. Just because, and hopefully, material prices, I don't, I won't say even come down, just start to stabilize, normalize, but there's no, there's no sign of that occurring right now in the market.
A 1,200-square-foot home is $300,000?
I do have the builder here who can probably better answer that.
Maybe I didn't understand.
No, your question is spot on.
It'll be in the upper 200s for a 12-foot.
The upper 200s. And everybody wants the smaller house, even though today, the average house sells in, I think, 14 to 19 days. And they're buying the ones with the bigger yards, as this gentleman said. And I don't, I don't understand that, that statement because, I mean, I watch a lot, I'm not in the real estate business like the mayor is, but I do pay close attention to it because of my past experiences.
Smaller yards.
1,800, anybody 1,800 square foot for $350,000?
That's correct, yes.
In downtown Manhattan, or where is it?
Dayton, Ohio, sir. Steve McConaughey, I work with Ryan Holmes. My territory for Ryan Holmes is the Dayton Division. I've worked in Southwest Ohio for 20-plus years with Ryan. The average sales price for Ryan Holmes today is mid-300s. The lifestyle products and homes that we want to put on the back portion of the property, they come, they come with certain things already inside the house. They're not options, we don't want to force people to put a lot of options into the house. We want those to be designed for the aging demographic where they can age in place. They have three-foot-wide hallways, wider doors, they have, your outlets are raised up higher, all the bathrooms have walk-in showers and benches. You know, those are specifically designed for that buyer to age in place and not put a lot of options in them. We want to control that cost. On the front portion of the community with the single-family lots, we want people to pick whatever they want to put in their house and choose their options. On the back end, we, we've done this across the country, we have a pretty good idea what that buyer's looking for, and we want to keep and control that price point on those lots. But yeah, the average price in this community, we, I think on the lifestyle side, on what we call the lifestyle side, will be in the 340 range, probably. And then, on the single-family lots, I think they're gonna be anywhere from 350 to the low-4s.
But those are good questions, because I don't, I can't believe the prices these days myself, to be quite honest with you.
Well, you said light poles are going up. I'm sure your lots haven't gone up in the last 10 years, though, have they?
No, my prices have.
You're still holding the same price point, right? Yeah, okay.
It's a big portion of that price.
Yeah, that's very wrong. No, and that's also a function of why the price is gonna be higher is because just inherently, you know, they're gonna have to pay more for the lots these days because everybody's cost has gone up.
I have a question in the single-family, the lifestyle. So, the building materials will be different than the back portion? You're gonna have different materials because you can build whatever you said in the front, the single-family?
So, all of the ranch lifestyle products are all standard, they're gonna be built with a craftsman exterior elevation. So, they will all have stone on all of them, the gables, a lot of the gables have pendants in them, they have board and batten in them. There's four elevations, I believe, with every one of the lifestyle homes. So, you know, we have a monotony clause internally where we don't build the same house to the left, to the right, and one across the street. But all of the lifestyle homes will be the cottage-style elevations. The single-family homes, we have five or six elevations per house. We let buyers choose what they want to put in them.
Thank you.
I do notice on the, on the lifestyle renderings you have, it shows, at least on these, that there are steps into the doors. And I know.
There will be a minimum of one step into the door.
Okay.
And we do want to build these with basements, so there will be a lower-level option for folks to have. Again, at the price point and building in Clayton, you know, some of these areas where we put these, we build all slabs. We think in Clayton that people would choose the basement because, you know, it's gonna add double the square footage to the house.
So, I apologize. I might have said slab ranches earlier because I'm used to, in other projects we work on, that they are slabs, and I didn't realize they were looking at possibly building basements here. So, I apologize, that one was on me. That's, but with that, the price is gonna be even higher because it's gonna
That's, but with that, the price is going to be even higher because it's going to cost more to put a basement in than a slab. So I think he's being low on the price point for the homes, in all honesty, at that point. I didn't, I did not realize that.
It's hard to predict pricing. I mean, if we look at where we were last year with pricing and where we've gone today, it's, I mean, it's amazing where the price has gone.
There's going to be one builder in your Ryan Homes? Okay.
If you go back. You can see.
How many lots are there?
There's 114. And like I said, you can see that light yellow would be the single-family lots, and then the darker or lighter brown would be the lifestyle lots.
On that big, the middle green or tango, what does that say?
Probably just open space, and then that's where that gas line is. You see kind of the line running across.
So that would be like a park, kind of?
Yeah, we'll probably put maybe a tot lot or something, and I got to look at that with access and these guys to maybe put a playground area or something back there for the community.
And then the, like, small, small baseball diamondfish one, what is that, create space?
That would be that dog park.
Okay. So the dog park is only for the lifestyle?
Correct. We would want to try to keep the single-family and the lifestyle, in all honesty, separated as much as possible. Just because, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but that buyer doesn't like to typically intermingle with the other one.
Jack, if I can ask a question. The plan we saw before from Redwood, they had 120-some apartments?
The original application had, I believe, up towards 150, maybe a little slightly under. Then when they came back, I believe it was around 120-some.
And that's as many houses as we're putting in now that we're, this plan gives us, guys?
114.
114? Oh, I thought you said 23, okay.
114.
I got a, my question here, and it's regarding, you know, kind of the traffic in the roads going around it. One of the big concerns there regarding traffic, and the staff has maybe already discussed this with you, but in case they haven't. So essentially, you know, two times a day on average during the week, and when like there's events going on at the high school, middle school, a lot of traffic there. We have done some studies and some applications for some grants in the past, and what they've come back with is telling us that the overall traffic, and due to the current density there, we, we're not able to, you know, to secure those funds externally to do some road expansion, put in a light, improve that intersection, et cetera. With this, it's obviously adding in a lot more density. So, I mean, you know, you're running up the Fox Road here, and essentially, a lot of people who live north of this area, up in Union and things like that, they like to cut into that area, cut down Haber to National, whether it's going to school, going over, you know, towards 70, something like that. So, you know, there is still a good amount of traffic there. My point here, getting to, yeah, I can tell you, especially during times like when school's going on, potentially both those entrances, you know, you would have traffic potentially even backing up to that. So is there something that you maybe would look at, too? And I know you said you're looking at a, you know, walkway going all along the road there, but doing a widening of the road might be, is, I think, going to be an essential at this point for, you know, for, you know, the new community coming in for the people there, but also for, you know, the current residents and the traffic around it.
No, that's a good, very good point. And talking with staff early on on this, what they indicated was we absolutely have to do a traffic study for this, and whatever that traffic study dictates, that's what you're going to be responsible for. I'll be honest, though, if that traffic study says that there's a signal warranted there or there's, you know, significant roadway improvements needed there, I don't know if this site with the size that it is can support that economic hit. A traffic signal will almost certainly kill the site here, just because there's not enough meat on the bone to make up the cost of probably a $400,000, $450,000 traffic signal that would need to go in there. I don't think this will warrant it, but I'm not the one doing the study. So the staff has indicated, though, whatever that traffic study says is what we'll be responsible for. We are also, I believe, on this plan, giving the right-of-way necessary, and Seth, maybe correct me if I'm wrong on that one, the right-of-way necessary so that if improvements are needed in the future, that the road's able to be widened with no issues. The one thing I did find interesting, and I don't know if I'm 100% correct on this, but I believe the ground to the north of this, almost all the way to Sweet Potato, is in a conservative shift, or it can't be developed. So, you know, that's, that's going to play big time into the traffic because there shouldn't be much of a future impact to this area because most of it is never going to be developed as of right now. But you guys might know that better than me. I, that's what I had heard. I'm not sure if that's 100% correct. But I can tell you, any kind of significant improvements, because there's just not enough lots to go around and enough profit to absorb that kind of hit without some sort of me asking for some significant assistance from the city. So that would be the big difference with this model versus the Redwood one, because I know at that time they were also proposing paying for a traffic light and other things. They could probably bear that a little bit better because those, a lot of them are for rent, and so they're getting long-term recurring revenue. And when you put that into their business model, they could absorb that. On a straight, single-family development model where it's just a one-time sale, that's going to be a hard, a hard pill to swallow.
I just want, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was on your guys' radar. And, you know, you've met with our development staff, they're excellent, so, you know, we'll hopefully, you know, if this goes through, work with something, you know, possibly some grants or some matching here. But, you know, hopefully, that's, I just want to make sure that that information was given to you and on your radar.
Very fair and good point, and a traffic study is being done.
I have one more question. This goes back to the Ryan Holmes, and I don't know who else would be familiar with this, but you have a large development going in up on 571 in West Melton.
Yeah.
And the homes are popping up, up there, and I'm just wondering if you know anything about, you know, are they selling? Are they, what are the prices up there? I mean, I'm assuming they're selling because they're building one after the other, but it's going up pretty quick.
We're completely out of lots up there.
So real quick-
It's really big, really big development, too.
That site is their simply Ryan product, so that's their entry-level product. This is not that. This is a step or two up. Correct, so.
That's a different product lineup than what we're proposing here.
But here's the kicker. What's the average price point, would you say, in that community, too, right now? Which is crazy to me.
You're putting me on the spot.
Oh, sorry. I had to do it. I know it's high, though, because I know we-
Well, that was the idea, you know.
Well, we have sites that they do for us all, and there's one in Springfield with the same thing, that entry-level product, and your sale price right now today is pushing 300. And these are not that. These will be probably a step, at least two steps above, so.
Yeah, and there's no basements up there either. It's the ground's solid rock, so.
When you say entry level, I mean, is it based on square footage? Is it based on lot size, materials? What do you say by that? All of those?
Yeah, all, I mean, when we say entry level or first-time home buyer, it's try to hit affordability, and that's harder and harder every day to do. But on our end, we still have a brand promise to deliver to the customer, right? So there's only so many things you can do in a home and still keep the integrity of the home. So, yeah, I say it's entry line, but you're still pushing upper 2s to get into a home.
Are there HOA?
Here?
There will be an HOA, right? I don't know what the fees will be, but I would say somewhere in that, probably 250 to 350 yearly annual dues, somewhere in there.
And a lot of that would be for maintenance of those, you know, entries, public areas, things like that?
Correct, mowing the detention basins, but yes. Fountains, fountains, they're expensive and they're a maintenance nightmare, but you got to have them.
Any other questions or comments for these folks?
I just have a-
It is, it's crazy. I don't- What's cra, what's interesting about it is the way the price and the materials are increasing, you don't see job wages increasing. But what you do have in this market, not just in Clayton, but the surrounding area, is a lot of jobs being created and coming, not created, but coming. And the question is, is where are those people going to live and how are they going to afford the places that they're going to live, so.
Interest rates.
Bingo.
Um, streets, those would be made in the city?
Those will be public streets that we would turn over to the city. Correct.
Just have a couple of questions here. The first one being is that the previous consideration with Redwood, there was some interaction with the neighbors, essentially, as far as what was being proposed to go in. Have you heard anything from the neighbors, or you've approached the neighbors, or conversation with the neighbors, or comments coming from the neighbors in terms of your ideas?
Quick answer is no. I haven't approached the neighbors. I'm sure they don't even probably know about this yet. Maybe they do, but I would love to meet. Well, that's great because I would love to meet with the neighbors if they want to have a discussion and get their thoughts or concerns and see if we can't do something to alleviate those, so.
I just, I just want to try to get things to prevent from the direction they started going the last time.
Yeah, no, no, we certainly don't want that. We want to be good neighbors to the community, to the surrounding properties, you know. We're happy to discuss that and see if we can't make it a win-win situation for everyone.
My next question is, this is conceptual site plan, and with being a concept, things change. And it kind of comes down to being you've proposed 114 lots total for this whole development. Once you get a plan for a final site assessment, drawing, design, if it goes that far, is 114 the breakpoint as far as you have to have 114? If it drops down to 110, is it like, it's a, it's a no-go?
Well, no, this is exactly why I wanted to meet with you all this evening, and it's a good question. You know, my plan after this, depending on how this meeting was, was to put together that rezoning application and submit it and try to be at the March meeting. It's what I'm shooting for right now. So if you guys have issues with the density or the number of lots for this, you know, I want to hear about it and I'll see, you know, I'll go back to my performa and I'll, you know, because my costs are going to stay the same. I'm going to have the same amount of road. It's based on this because there's only so much, it's only such a big piece of property that there's only so much you can do with it. So if I go down in lots or density, I'm just, it's cutting into revenue, and so, you know, my costs are all staying the same. And so can the project bear that? I don't know.
Yeah, one of the, one of the references on this is that presenting your drawing concept to like the fire department as far as being able to get emergency vehicles in and out. You know, if they say, yes, we can, or no, we can't, this has to change, how much that impacts your layout.
So my engineers that put this together, though, they do look at your city standards and your turning radiuses, so I'm comfortable and confident that your fire and police department, from an accessibility and turning maneuver standpoint, will not have an issue with this.
Well, I know Brian had a, like an emergency secondary access point under other proposed concept, not with yours, but under what was previously designed. And if he asks for something like that, how that impacts, that might impact as far as how this layout goes.
Yeah, no, that, if they are looking for a secondary access, which I'm hoping they're not because of the size and the fact that there's the two entrances for each section of the community, but that's, if the fire department did ask for a secondary access, one, I don't know where it would go. And two, yes, that would impact it.
This is, this is your expertise, but I mean, I'm one of the persons of physics.
Don't give me that much credit. We, and we do our best to eliminate that, but it's inherently, it's land development. There's no way to avoid surprises. You just have to know there's going to be surprises and then work and fight your way through them.
Just real quick on the secondary access from Chief Garver, that was because Redwood had eliminated one of their entrances. The original application had two entrances to the project. They eliminated the one that was coming out off of Fox, so that's why Chief Garver asked for that secondary, because there was only one entrance.
That was the reason I was asking, because I, you know, was trying to avoid that idea of having to all of a sudden have to drop a lot and now all of a sudden have it to have a, be a, like a undeclared access point as far as coming off of Fox Road.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, we, I don't think that's going to be required, and I don't think that's going to be something they ask for, but we won't know until we actually make a formal submittal and that, which is okay, and we run into that, and we'll have to address it if it is. But I think, you know, and that, just going back, is why, you know, I wanted to run this plan by you guys, and I know, you know, nobody's taking a vote on it tonight, nobody has all the final details in front of them, but just get a sense and a feel from you guys so that I don't, you know, come in and, you know, you guys get mad at me and throw me out in March. I don't want to do that. So, and like I said, I'm knowing that there's some of the neighbors here, too. Hopefully, I can grab a word or two with them afterwards and just see if they would like to meet or get their feelings or thoughts on the plan, because that's going to go a long way, too, as well.
Well, another of the concerns the neighbors had was surface runoff. And I'm not sure exactly which direction the water from this property actually would flow, but flows from the property into adjoining properties to the west, or?
West of east.
Okay.
So we'll, for your guys as engineers, definitely put together a detailed drainage and stormwater plan to make sure that, hopefully, if they're experiencing any problems today, this will take care of it. So we'll make sure we engineer the site so that it doesn't, definitely not further cause any problems, but hopefully alleviate what they're dealing or experiencing today. Because right now, it's just overland flow. It's a farm field. There's nothing slowing that water down in those heavy rains. Now, they'll have, they'll have detention basins, they'll have streets, and they'll have yards and houses, you know, taking on a lot of that so that it shouldn't be an issue for them. And we'll be directing it and controlling it as well. But it's definitely something that always comes up, and we'll make, we'll keep a close eye on it to make sure we're not causing any problems.
Doesn't the county require that?
Very much so, yes.
That's what I thought. And it's the houses and the streets and everything that creates the flow of water that wasn't there before.
Correct. The pervious versus impervious, and we'll have to, it's, you know, I got an engineering degree, but I won't insult engineers by trying to speak their lingo.
Because concrete doesn't absorb a lot of water, you know? It just runs downhill. Thank you.
But storm sewers and storm structures help take it to where it needs to go and direct it a lot more efficiently, so. I'm hope, I'm not hopeful. I'm pretty sure that we'll, if they are experiencing issues today, we're going to make it better.
Any other questions or comments from council or staff? Okay. Anything else from you guys? Anybody?
Just lastly, once again, greatly appreciate your time, and we'll see you in March. So thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck. Thanks for coming in.
No, thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the workshop?
So moved. Second.
30. It's all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.